The meeting of the Belgrade Planning Board. It is January 4th, 2024. It is 6:01. And we're gonna start the meeting. First order in the agenda of the meeting is a call to order and a roll call. Tonight in the meeting, we have Mr. Richard Baker. And we have Mr. Nick Sakaro. And we have Mr. George Seal. And Mr. Craig Alexander. And Manfred Musen, who's our CEO, and myself, Sarah Langgett. I'm gonna invite the audience to introduce themselves for the roll call.
Christine Evans.
Carol Johnson.
Kathy Atkinson.
Andy Dunbar.
Ruth Rollins.
Phyllis Matson.
Lynn Matson.
Liz Fontaine.
Right. So most of you are here tonight is for the item on the agenda. For the parking lot of the Apulian Friends of Belgrade Lakes Village. Mr. Rollin is here, visiting us from the Roman Planning Board. He asked to come over and just come and check out our proceedings. And so he's welcome. With that said, let's proceed then with new business. Actually, with public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that will place his statement before the meeting starts? Right? I see nobody.
I think I should speak up.
Sure.
We did send out letters to the abutters.
Okay.
And I did have one response that was concerned about traffic entering and exiting the new parking area from the West Road entrance.
Okay.
All right. Their concerns were they went through a very large effort to have the speed limit reduced to 25 miles an hour in that area. This resident is the Toby, is it Toby Park subdivision?
Toby Land.
Toby.
Toby Land.
The Toby Development. Toby Development.
So their concern were the speeds, obviously, the amount of traffic that's gonna be added to that. Apparently, West Road used to be a little bit of a speedway before they changed the end of the road when it was just a yield sign and now it's a stop sign. There's also concerns about foot traffic and litter leaking between the parking lot and the public beach along Pond.
So did they submit comments in writing or just talk to you?
It was a phone call conversation. And this was an individual. As far as I know, it was not a representation of the Toby Park community.
I'm not familiar with what Toby Park is.
That's Lake Shore Drive. And it goes all the way up the West Road up to the Anne Bowens, I think is the last place.
So that's the only subdivision of the hotel.
Yes, and it goes all the way down Lake Shore Drive. And well.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a copy of your, in the packet that I gave you initially, the application. In the right title and interest section, there's a copy of the Toby subdivision plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Andy.
Mr. Baker.
Just a comment regarding the traffic. My thinking would be that this parking lot, I think as you mentioned last week, would really not create any new traffic. There's people who are coming to the village.
Green.
Area, the new park or whatever we call it. People are coming there anyway. I don't know what the parking lot's gonna do. May draw more people because it's easy parking, but for the most part, the people are coming here are coming anyway.
Might need to mitigate traffic, actually. People aren't driving around looking for a parking spot. They go down the bar.
I think going down, they go to a parking space. Or they're just slowly taking off. And the West Road entrance has always been there, so.
Right. It just hasn't been used in recent years, but that isn't perfect.
Sarah.
Sure.
I do have a response from one of our board members who's not here, who's part of the Toby Land Development.
Well, okay.
So it may be appropriate for me to read this.
Sure.
Blah, 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 blah. The news that there was objection by the Toby Land Owners Association. Plans to object to our developing and gifting a parking lot to the town. I am a member of the Toby Land Owners Association. And this is the first time I am hearing about any objections. To the contrary, I have heard only positive feedback from the members whom I know. Furthermore, I do not know what capacity this person claims the right to represent the TLA, Toby Land Owners Association. There was no discussion of the parking lot at the annual meeting, which took place after the parking lot had been announced. But several members in conversation before and after the meeting expressed general optimism that the parking lot would relieve congestion on the West Road and Lake Shore Drive when events are held at the Village Green. And he references a couple of people I know personally and said. They, these two folks are year-round residents and supporters of the project that benefits the community, so we might want to reach out to them. The homes on the south side of West Road. Up to Longhorn Road are on the former Belgrade Hotel property purchased by Toby. So their owners are also Toby Land Owners Association members. And he said he would be willing to put this in writing, but his, at the end, it says, I'm sort of baffled because this, the increased parking lot should, would not increase congestion, but decrease punishment getting those cars off the road and into the parking lot. And that, and this actually is from Eric Hoogland, for the record, who is on this point, but is also, lives on Lake Shore Drive and is a member of that association. But I think maybe there was an inference that they'd had an association meeting and discussed it, which according to Eric is, there may have been discussion with people, but his discussion with people was all positive.
Okay. So is there probably any way that you can ask Mr.?
Hoogland.
Hoogland to give you permission to forward that letter to Mary Vogel?
Yeah.
So we can have it in the record?
We're to enhance, actually.
To enhance, actually, yeah.
I'm sure he'll give me the permission, but I will ask him forward because there are names in it, so he may say he'd like to take out a couple of names.
Sure.
That's fine. That way we have it on the public record.
Right, yeah.
Well, you're already on the public record.
Right. I just didn't use names.
Yeah. Hans, the comments, one of the comments that you received, if I'm interpreting it correctly, seems to be implying that they're concerned about people parking in this parking lot and then going down to the beach. That could happen now. And I guess my question is, do you or does anybody in the audience know if it indeed been happening now and if it's been problematic? I mean, certainly, parking for the beach is problematic. There's no question about that. And the times I've been there, I'm really tired of cleaning up dirty baby diapers. But the, but I'd be curious of what people's thoughts are about that.
Yeah, there's just one person raised all these situations. She's a, she's a butter, and a butter. Been there for a long time, has dealt with the changes in downtown where they put in the stop sign in front of Sunset Grove versus what used to be a yield sign and people just speeding up the West Road.
But am I interpreting one of the comments correctly?
That's right. Yep. She's concerned about crap, crash and litter to and from, parking.
Yes, sir.
Lynn Matson, you know, there's a parking lot there now with the Village Green. And I don't think any of us have ever observed anyone parking there and then going down to the beach to swim. I have never seen it used for that purpose.
Right. I've never seen much of anything there unless there's an event.
But even if with this new parking lot, even if they did park there when they're on the beach, I mean, that's what this parking lot is for.
Well, yeah, no, I agree. And in fact, I was thinking, I probably would do that rather than try to squeeze in down on Lake Shore Drive and block it for fire engines. But the, you know, I think that would be a very appropriate use. I'm just curious, though, you know, whether there's, we've already seen the increase and, you know, what's the basis of speculation of increased litter? And it doesn't, I don't see it.
I agree.
Okay.
I mean, there may be reasons why there's litter issues, but it may have more to do with other uses in the immediate area than this.
All right. So any other comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And Andy, this is for you. This is a follow-up to what I said I would ask tonight at the last meeting. And that has to do with the phosphorus control and the phosphorus limit for the North Basin of Long Pond. We got an email from Hans saying that we would be receiving a phosphorus control plan, but I don't see one. It's.
Right under the agenda.
This is the DEP's best management practices. It's not specific to this project. It's, it's got the number in it, but I guess the question is. I take it, does this meet the, going to meet the 0.037 pounds per acre per year standard? And so how?
Okay. This is going to be a net decrease in impervious area. And it's gonna be a net increase in vegetated area. So it's actually, there's actually gonna be a reduction over what's the, what's currently there and has been there for a long time.
Right. Is that somewhere in the?
We did not do the phosphorus numbers. It's on the plan.
Okay. On the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, we're now with.
The reduction on the water price was the best on the site plan.
Yeah.
It's been here now last week, yes.
Well, the only reason I brought it up last time and today again was that in the application itself, the questions regarding phosphorus control. The question that 59 as to what the standard is.
This is an existing place, society, you know, all the impervious anxiety there is being redacted, reduced.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, Chris. I'm arguing for the application being complete.
I feel I should leave.
Okay. So more for any other comments, questions? See none. Just my side of things. The, did, the application had a traffic flow study? I just, the only reason I said that is I wonder if having one side, because of these complaints and so on. If having two entrances, having one entrance and one exit, instead of having both sides being entrance and exit would make a difference. And this is just a curious question. It's not, I'm not implying that anything will gonna be changed. If we were to have just one inlet and one outlet in that parking lot, would the chance of increased noise or traffic issues will settle down or be better? It's just.
That would be worrying. I mean, it works. You have to come around to get any of that. I think it would be a search use of a parking lot.
Okay.
If you couldn't come down your road and go in your entrance.
Okay.
People are gonna be driving all the way around.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a definite increase in traffic. Out on the highways.
That's a thought. All right. So good. I appreciate the explanation. So that said, we're gonna move on with the findings of fact and conclusion of law for the commercial development review ordinance. All right. I have to read all this for the public, so it's gonna be a little bit tedious. It's gonna make you aware of that. All right. So in this matter, we are, the project name is Village Green Parking Lot. Applicant name is Friends of Village Lakes, of the Belgrade Lakes Village. Applicant mailing address is, yeah, it's 32 Main Street. And the project location is in the, between the Main Street and the West Road on map 25 Lot 6. To the town of Belgrade, go, this is an ode to the code enforcement officer pursuant to the Belgrade Commercial Development Review Ordinance as last amended on March 17, 2017. The town of Belgrade Plan Board, Planning Board has considered the application of the Friends of Belgrade Lakes Village, including its site plan, other supporting materials and documentation, board meeting testimony and other related materials contained in the record, and makes the following findings of fact and conclusion of law. Number one, application summary. The project is to improve an existing self-storage facility into a public parking lot. waiver request is submitted, none. Application process review. Date, application accepted as completed, that was the last meeting, which was December 7. Was a site visit conducted? And the answer is no. Board meeting dates is 12/7/2023 and January 4th, 2024. Data the board render final decision will be today, which is January 4th. Review criteria findings. A, the planning board finds the application for the subject project is complete and the applicable application fee has been paid in full to the town. Application materials, site plan and supporting documentation have been submitted by the applicant and are retained in the project file maintained in the Belgrade Town Office on the project name. The applicant has requested in writing that the board waived the following ordinance application requirements and review standards. We had none of those in here. We just have, there were all instances, but there was no waived requests, isn't it?
Right.
That's none. The applicant has provided supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the following ordinance requirements or standards are not applicable to the proposed project size, site condition, design type of other unique features. This documentation includes the following. So public record and. We, PR, yes?
Public record and application submissions.
So I'm gonna refer that wording as PRAS. Now, public record and application submissions. All right.
This was actually easy during, easier during the pandemic. We just wanted you to do it by cut and paste. One.
So next is the applicant has filed to provide adequate supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the applicant's proposal meets the ordinance criteria for a waive from the following requirements or standards.
That's not a.
That's not, it's just none. The board finds the project will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that, and on sound or unhealthy condition exists. Based on the applications of mills, the project design planned date. So the plan date will be 12/7?
November 30th.
November 30th?
That's the date of the application.
Okay.
Listened.
Yeah.
Yeah. And soil erosion plan dated, that's the same date, November 30th? Or the applicant did not submit a soil erosion plan. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna strike out the last four. I'm gonna strike that out because it was submitted.
It was submitted and satisfactory.
What was that again?
Well, and it's satisfactory.
Okay. So. The board finds the project. We have to vote one by one?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna take a vote on that first item, which is item three here in the application. So.
Think the answer is on the side.
So we got five, so we got all five. We don't have, we need an alternate. So we found that all the, all the documentation was satisfied, satisfied the design plan and the soil erosion control plan. So we're gonna vote on that.
Yes.
Mr. Sakaro?
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And I was abstaining, so is four in favor, none opposed, and one abstain. And the reason why I'm saying out this voting is because I'm socially, very socially related to some of the people involved in the application. And so that said, we're gonna continue with the approval portion of things. So then the next one is the board finds that the project will have, well, will not have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands. Reference our Article 6 standards, section three and six, based on the PRAS. And we're gonna vote on that?
Will not.
Will not. Mr. Sakaro?
Will not.
Mr. Surgeon?
Will not.
Mr. Seal?
Will not.
Mr. Alexander? All right. So it's four, will not, zero opposed, and one abstain. All right. The board finds that the project will not have an adverse impact on lake, pond, or stream, according to Article 6 standards, section 13 and section 15, based on PRAS. Mr. Sakaro?
Will not.
Mr. Surgeon?
Will not.
Mr. Seal?
Will not.
Mr. Alexander? And me, I will abstain, Sarah Langgett will abstain. So it's four will not, zero opposed, one opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project will not. The board finds that the project will provide for adequate stormwater management, according to Article Standards 13, based on the PRAS. Mr. Sakaro?
Will.
Mr. Surgeon?
Will.
Mr. Seal?
Will.
Mr. Alexander? So me, Sarah Langgett, I will abstain. So it's four in favor that will, none opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project will adequate, will provide adequate storage disposal. Article, Article 6 standards, according to Article 6 standards, sections 14 and 15, based on PRAS. Mr. Sakaro?
Will.
Mr. Surgeon?
Is that, is that applicable?
Yeah. I mean, is the bathroom there?
There's gonna be.
Water park.
Water park.
So. Well.
Okay. So Mr. Surgeon?
Will.
Will. Mr. Seal?
Will.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
So four in favor that it will, zero opposed, and one abstain. All right. The board finds that the project is not located in a floodplain area and conforms with the Belgrade Floodplain Ordinance, based on PRAS. Yeah, we're going with that. So Mr. Sakaro?
Yes.
Mr. Surgeon?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander? So four in favor, none opposed, and one abstain. And me, Sarah Langgett, I'm gonna abstain. All right. The board finds that the project will not result in air or water pollution, according to Standard 6, Section 1, 13H and 15, based on PRAS. Mr. Sakaro?
Will not.
Mr. Surgeon?
Will not.
Mr. Seal?
Will not.
Mr. Alexander? And me, Sarah Langgett, I abstain. So it's four in favor that will not, zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project. I don't think this is applicable. Will have sufficient drinking water for Corin. Of course, he needs that development. So this one is NA, non-applicable.
Yes.
The board finds that the project alone and in conjunction with existing activities will not adversely impact the quality and quantity of the groundwater, reference of Article 6 standard, section 5, 15A, based on PRAS. It will not. Mr. Sakaro?
Will not.
Mr. Surgeon?
Will not.
Mr. Seal?
Will not.
Mr. Alexander? And me, Sarah Langgett, I will abstain. So four in favor that will not. And me, Serangue, I will abstain, so four in favor that will not zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the proposed activity will dispose of all soil waste in conformance with, uh, local regulations and that it, and that the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to the town transfer, uh, facility, uh, will not exceed capacity. Uh, reference Article Six standards, section fourteen A, based on P R A S. So Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister, uh, big, Seal?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Will not.
Mister Alexander?
It's a trick.
Just make sure that you guys are away. So me, I, I, I will abstain out of it, and it says four in favor that will not zero opposed, and one is abstain. The board finds that the project will not have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land use, uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, and their effects from the project. References Article Six standards, section one, eleven, twelve, fifteen A, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Will not.
Mister Seal?
Will not.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I will abstain, so it's four in favor. So will not, zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion and unsafe condition, conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highway or roads. References Article Six standards, section two and nine, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Will not.
Mister Seal?
Will not.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I will abstain, so it's four in favor that will not zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project, that the project to the maximum extent possible will not have adverse, adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic or archaeological sites, or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline of the water body. References Article Six standards, section four, five, eight, six, eleven, and twelve, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Will not.
Mister Seal?
Will not.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I will abstain, so it's four in favor that will not zero opposed, and one abstain. We're getting there halfway. The board finds that the project and to the maximum extent possible will not have an adverse effect or significant wildlife habitat and critical natural areas identified by the main beginning, by the main habitat, something that is not quite here. So ma, it says main, main beginning with habitat?
That's the correct name, actually.
It is?
Yeah. It's odd, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. With habitat program, Main Department of, uh, Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, Main Department of Conservation Critical National Area, Areas Program, or the Town or Belgrade Comprehensive Plan. References Article Six standards, section B, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Hmm.
Mister Seal?
Will not.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I will abstain, so it's four in favor will not zero opposed, and one abstain. The board find that the project does conform with all applicable Belgrade ordinances, including but not limited to shoreline zoning, minimum, lot size, subdivision, multiple family dwelling, manufactured housing and mobile park, home, home park, solid waste, recycling, and municipal, uh, street and road, adult businesses, supplemental junk, uh, junkyard, and outdoor graveyard, and three ordinances, based on P R A S. So Mister Sakara?
Does.
Mister Surgeon?
Uh, yeah.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I abstain, so it's four in favor that will conform zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the project will not unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a, in a great pond. References Article Six standards, section fifteen, based on P R A S. So Mister Sakara?
Will not.
Mister Surgeon?
Will not.
Mister Seal?
Will not.
Mister Alexander? So it's four in favor that will not zero opposed, and one that we're abstain. Alright. The board finds that the project will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance, Article Six, Section Five, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Will.
Mister Surgeon?
Will.
Mister Seal?
Will.
Mister Alexander? So it four in favor that it will, zero opposed, and one abstain. The board find that the application has sufficient right title or interest to undertake the development based on P R A S. Mister, uh, Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Surgeon?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? And me, Serangue, I abstain, so it's four in favor that has zero opposed, and one abstain. The board finds that the applicant does provide for safe and adequate parking based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Surgeon?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? So four in favor that it does, zero opposed, and one that abstain. The board finds that the project will conform to all applicable provisions of this ordinance, including but not limited to the development standards of specific activities where it's applicable in reference to Article Seven, based on P R A S. Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Surgeon?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander? So four in favor that will, zero opposed, and one abstain. Alright, therefore, the Town of Belgrade Planning Board approves subject to the following conditions of, of the application of the friends of Belgrade Lakes, um, village? Friends? To develop and use the public parking area as described in the review criteria findings above. Therefore, the Town of Belgrade Planning Board, okay, and that's, that's it. Um, now, um, the standard conditions of approval, uh, to be included with all approvals is number one, if construction has not been substantially started within twelve months of work.
Thirty, yes, for thirty-six months?
Thirty-six months, okay, so, but cross that and put thirty-six here. Thank you, Mister Alexander. This approval and the subsequent permit for the Belgrade Code Enforcement Officer are null and void. The references Article Four and section, and section four. Uh, the, so you guys, you guys have four ye, I mean, three years. Uh, the board approval of this project as described above is limited to the, to that described in the application and depicted in the accompanying plan and other application submissions. Except to the extent that the board has expressly indicated in this document that certain depictions may be revised by the applicant without further review and approval by the board. Any changes to the application, site plan, and all supporting application submissions must receive prior approval by the board, including but not limited to changes in the proposed location of the structures, roads, parking, vehicle entrance and exit, wells, sur, surface wastewater systems, the method of waste disposal, the extent and location of divested areas, material storage, and outdoor lighting and signage, and methods of stormwater and phosphorus runoff control. Third one is that unless a waiver on a specific ordinance standard has been requested by the applicant, being guiding and approved by the board, the development or use is required to meet all applicable ordinance standards. Number four is that this board approval and its associate permit from the Code Enforcement Officer is transferable to subsequent owners of the property. All subsequent owners are required to comply with the conditions of the project board's approval. That means the town. Alright, so other than that, I don't think we have any other project specific conditions of approval. Alright?
Was there one about the certified D P contractor?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So, um.
Catch, Richard.
So approval, uh, is conditioned, uh, to the submittal of the, um, uh.
Name and D P certification number. Before start of construction, before start of construction. Uh, to the code enforcement officer, doesn't have to come down.
So approval is conditioned to submittal of, um.
The name?
The name.
And certification number.
And certification.
D P approved contractor. Prior to the start of construction, to the code enforcement officer.
You mentioned, um, of the D P, um, approved contact.
Right.
I would've forgot that myself, except while you guys were going through all that, I reviewed the minutes from the last meeting.
Let somebody read some.
Yeah, been a month ago, so, and we went through a big storm, and it was a lot of buffer there uh, prior to the start of construction. To the board enforcement enforcement. Officer. Any other one? Last chance. Alright, so we now are gonna vote on the whole, um, finding those paths to close it off. Alright, so, uh, Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister, um, Surgeon?
Yes.
Mister Seal?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
So it's four yeses for the entire application, and I wanna, uh, abstain, none opposed. Four in favor for total application? None opposed, one abstain. And we're back, congratulations.
Um, at the last meeting, I, I said something that was erroneous. You had asked, somebody had asked, um, Mister Mattson, maybe you had asked about what, if any approvals, would be needed in the future if you decided to pave the parking lot? Current proposal that was approved tonight is for gravel. Um, I had said that maybe a code enforcement officer permit would be required. I was in error, I went back to the ordinance. Uh, all that would be required is an amendment to this approval tonight, and that can be as simple as a, um, letter request, possibly with, um, elaborating on, you know, what, if any, and there may be none, impact it may have on stormwater runoff. Something like that, it wouldn't require a separate permit application.
Thank you for clarifying that, and checking one, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Did I have to submit the contractor for that as well?
No, no, not for paving. The, the, D P doesn't certify paving.
Yeah.
Just excavation. A bit more time reading than anything else. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see.
So, uh, the next order of business is all business. And, uh, uh, we're gonna be talking about the L B two thousand and three and our interface with K B C O G. Uh, I gotta announce, uh, uh, very excitedly that we have a communication from K B C O G this week, it's not yesterday, that they're ready to take our case and help us with the, uh, our, the modifications we wanna put together for this, for the ordinances to comply with the L B two thousand and three requirements. So, um, a lot of exchange of emails happened this morning to, to, um, set up, um, the clinic and so on. The person that is taking our case, her last name is Shaw, and she happens to, gonna be this way in Belgrade next week. Particularly, she's gonna be here on Wednesday and Friday. From five thirty to six thirty, she had commitments with the town, with the, uh, Operation Plan Preview Group. And so she offered to meet with us before that meeting, uh, from four to five, five thirty or so, during the break, that she can go and do the meeting. So, um, I guess it's not gonna be a public meeting because we are not making decisions. This is more of a, uh, clinic, uh, for the. It's just more of a clinic, uh, for the board. So, with that said, um, I open the floor for comments on it. Uh, the, the deadline to comply with the state law is still July first of this year. Um, I put together a timeline. Um, to make that happen and if we can wrap this up by the end of the month. We're gonna be in good shape to make it in the battle for June. So the voting will be, we always have voting in this town on the second Tuesday of June. So we're basically gonna make it, um. Right to home plate at the end. Um, so I. I shared that timeline today with Mrs. Bobo and Mr. Alan Muzen. And I wanted to have feedback from Mrs. Bobo and Mrs. Bobo said they look perfect, they look great. But the cutoff date is gonna be the twenty ninth of this month. Which is the Monday before the first meeting of the selectmen in February. And then from there, all the domino cascade all the way to election day.
The thing that should be said, what you told me earlier, that the woman who'll be working with us from K B cog. Is of the opinion that's a stretch and she can't commit that she'll be able to meet that deadline.
Yeah.
And that, um, the, um. And that, and Sarah had told me the same thing, that, um. That what's important is that we're making a solid, good faith effort to try to comply with that deadline. And if we can't, you know, um, that's just the way it is, particularly since the state bears some responsibility for that. Given that they didn't get money till to K B cog and until, uh, uh, mid, mid fall. And, um, and so they were in no position to help municipalities in the Kennebec Valley until they got funding to, uh, to pay for it. Um, so that's, that's on the state as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll go after the towns that are doing nothing.
Yeah, right, well, that's the other.
That are doing something that just didn't make it.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, and, and even that's probably a stretch, you know, uh. Uh, more likely, towns that did nothing will get more time to do nothing. Um, the, um. Um, but, uh, I, I think, um, the way Sarah portrayed it and the way this woman portrayed it, uh, from K B cog. Uh, I think is, you know, the best we can do is make a solid, good faith effort to comply and if we can't. You know, if we miss it by several months, so be it. The, but I do think we need to make that good faith effort.
Yeah, um, added to that, she, out of her own recklessness, she stated. That we're not the only, the only town with this problem, that there are only towns with the same, very same problem. And she, uh, she recognized that, uh, uh, the, the demands and requirements from the state. Uh, they're not practical. Um, so that, that said, um, I wonder, uh. How many of us will be willing to meet next week? And then, um, also add to the planning board a meet, an extra meeting this month. Which our second meeting will be on the eighteenth and that's already, um, uh, scheduled to have Mr. Collins. Uh, I was, for Mr. Clark, uh, come to do a training for us, right? So it will be the week after that we will meet again. So it will be on the twenty fifth that we might be meeting again, if not maybe twice that week of the twenty fifth. Uh, to try to, to clamp this down, if there's an opportunity for it.
And, and she's available then?
Uh, I'm not sure, uh, on that week, but I wanna make sure that we, we have our docs in the wrong week, if we can meet.
Yeah, I'll be able to.
Okay, on the week of the twenty fifth, yeah, so we most likely on that week. Will mean, if anything, to, to maybe a final stretch, we might be meeting twice. And most likely will be on a Wednesday and, um, Thursday that week. So it will be the twenty fourth and the twenty fifth of, of January. Extra meeting and then next week will be the tenth and the twelfth. And, um, the, uh, ten of the twelve, uh, will be starting at four P M here. And on the twenty, whether. Yeah, well, I just, um, the very first, I think maybe the first two meetings will be enough with her. But then the last two meetings is with us to, to approve the draft that we wanna send. So it's, it's kind of hushing and pushing this hard. So, um, we might not need to meet the last week in January. It all depends on how this, this initial meeting next week comes about.
As I told you on the phone, I, I have a conflict on the twelfth.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the twenty fourth and twenty fifth.
I just trying to, I'm trying to feel how, how all of you feel about it. I, uh, I put a timeline, maybe you guys can look over the timeline and say. You know what, you, you buffered this timeline a little bit too much, maybe we can get done by mid February and still make it, I'm not sure.
I, I personally, and I don't, you know, as you, people all heard me say, I don't work for a living anymore. But I'm a little concerned about meeting twice a week.
Okay.
Um, and, and the impact that has on people's personal lives.
Good.
And, uh, and, you know, going back to the standard of, are we making a good faith effort if we're meeting, uh.
Once a week?
Yeah, once a week, that seems to be, to be meeting the good faith, uh, effort standard.
That sounds good, so, so then we're, I hear that we're probably most likely, we're aiming for sure to, for Wednesday, the tenth. Next Wednesday, at least. And then at least, uh, maybe January, the twenty fifth. That, that's a Thursday.
And that's at four o'clock?
Uh, the next, the next one on Wednesday is at four, yeah, on the twenty fifth, we can do it regular time, six. So we have a agreement on that on January, before the four, if we can make it.
I definitely won't be able to make that.
That's okay.
The twenty fifth, I mean.
Okay, and then the twenty fifth, six P M.
And the eighteenth, I'm gonna do.
You mean the twelfth, you mean the twenty fourth?
No, 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 the eighteenth.
Oh, yeah, this month, this month.
Already set that, I'm committed to that.
Yeah.
I'll let you know by the twenty fifth. I, I know for sure that I won't be able to make it Wednesday, at four.
Good.
We'll need to make sure that we, uh, either have this room or the other small conference room available that we're. You know, it's not, for other town committees.
Yeah, on Wednesday, the, the, the town office is closed.
Oh.
So, uh, we're gonna be the first one here at four o'clock on Wednesday.
The town office is closed, huh?
Uh, hands. That's good.
We're more important than having two, one.
Okay, we're good. So then, um, so on the twelfth, if nobody else can, at least, and, and we needed to meet with her on the twelfth that she offered. I, I can make it on the twelfth, it's a week Friday and I have to mention that he can. I wonder if at least one more of you can.
If I, I don't have my calendar with me.
Sure.
But if it's open, I will come.
That'd be wonderful. So other than that, then the whole board is committing to the twelfth, I mean, to the tenth. Next Wednesday, if you guys can, and then we're gonna, uh, add, uh.
So what's, what's she gonna be doing, just going over them?
Yeah, we, we provided to her, the, she needed all the ordinances, are gonna be compacted, that's already taken care of. Uh, I'm doing a, I'm finishing a summary of what we have accomplished through August. And send it to her tomorrow morning, so she is already primed up. When she comes here Wednesday, she already, well, she already had known questions and so on, so we. Kind of expecting a. Feedback from her on those questions. And as the dialogue will go on, on next Wednesday, we might come up with new questions there. That we probably will wrap up Friday and that will be, I think that will be our session with her. I don't think she will be able to do much more with us.
It'd be good if we could, early on, like possibly at that first meeting, she could advise us on. Uh, what ordinances we clearly don't have to worry about, like for example, do we not have to worry about the subdivision ordinance making any changes to that at all? And clearly, the minimum lot size ordinance needs to be amended. And then, you know, and then maybe even, you know, and then figure out, it might take her more time to figure out whether. The, uh, multi-dwelling unit ordinance, uh, is in or out, you know, and whether that needs to be amended or not.
We thought that would sound like when you, when you never pay.
I mean, one of the critical issues here on, uh, will be the state plumbing code and whether it's up to the task of, um. Allowing greater density of residential development. Sometimes on sites that are not particularly well suited for subsurface wastewater. Without private wells being contaminated or the lakes getting contaminated via groundwater. So that's something that we'll have to, I think, look to you for answers to, um.
Well, that responsibility, responsibility falls to the senior value leaders that are placed under state.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, the problem is with the state plumbing code itself, it's never been designed, nor is its goal to protect. Drinking water supplies or surface water from water soluble contaminants, it's only been biologics. Vir, uh, viruses and bacteria primarily. Uh, to a lesser extent, some dissolvable like nitrates and nitrites, but, um. And, um, and so. I'm not that familiar with the latest amendments that went into effect back in October.
The sizing of systems has changed, state same, it hasn't changed. It's still ninety gallons per bedroom, hundred and twenty gallons per apartment, one bedroom apartment or efficiency apartment. So assume, uh, accessory dwelling unit, you're gonna start at a hundred and twenty gallon system. Unless you say, you know, it's two bedrooms and the sizing goes by number of bedrooms.
Well, it's, for example, my, some of my questions, and these are questions that others had raised back in August, were. Do we need to supplement somehow in the, in our ordinances, the state plumbing code? For example, uh, if an accessory dwelling unit's gonna be, um, proposing to use an existing. Uh, subsurface wastewater disposal system. I didn't see in the plumbing code that there's any inspection requirement of that system. And so should we add that? By way of example, or should we have more of a setback between existing drinking water supply wells? And, uh, and, uh, these systems that are gonna be proposed on. Not forty thousand square feet, but on. Was it twenty five square, twenty five thousand square feet, is that the state minimum?
Twenty.
Twenty, um, and so if you're on marginal soils or shallow bedrock groundwater. Uh. You might as well dump it in the well, you know, um, so.
Again, if you're on bedrock, senior value leader, you're gonna pick that up and say, you need to have an engineer system.
Well, I don't know what your experience has been, but what we've seen here in subdivisions is then they just run to. D H S and get a variance, and they give them out like candy. Um, I, it just raised a lot of concern for me because I don't wanna see the town by unintended consequences of this. L D, uh, end up in the position of having to build a public drinking water system and sewer system for Belgrade Lake Village. Or wherever else in town, the depot, uh, you know, places that have had a long history of. Wastewater systems failing, wells becoming contaminated, the other example would be the, uh, pinkup scope. Anyway, that, those are some of the questions I'm gonna be raising, uh. Uh. I mean, this is nothing new, I, I raised them back in August and some others did too. Uh, I know that Seven Lakes Alliance is, I don't know if they started, but they've been talking about. Looking at, to, um, to what extent septic systems are contaminating the lakes with phosphorus as well as other contaminants. Via groundwater, you know, groundwater flow going from septic systems to the lakes and, and contributing that way, not overland, but via groundwater. And there's a pretty, uh.
Should we test that right there?
Huh?
They should be able to test that right there.
Well, you can't because you get so much dilution. You gotta, you gotta test actually the water that's in the soil pores, or at least that's one technique you can use, or the technique that D P uses, but. Um, the, um. Um, so it's not as easy as you'd like, you know, my life, but, and dyes don't work.
I would just be inspired.
Yeah, but you're right.
So I designed for the next, uh, it was an experimental septic system, so. That's what I was getting there and it gets heavy years from the public and that's why I was saying they could test right in front.
Well, anyway, the, the, um, I. My only point is that those are things I think we'll need to discuss, maybe should. The woman from K B cog will be, have some answers to these questions, but I just. In the past, I, I got the impression that they may not be that familiar with the state plumbing code.
Yeah, when we, uh, when we had a Zoom meeting with them, um, you made some of those questions. And the guy that was taking the, the Zoom, um, uh, was in charge of the Zoom meeting. He said, we have no clue, we have no direction on what, on any of that that you're asking. So hopefully between then, that, that, that meeting was like in August last year or late, late July.
July.
Um, and between then and now, I, I know there probably some answers on that.
So I mentioned the prep rally, prep rally they had down there, Anthony had. When he first got all the seven lakes alliance up to be in Maryland. Um. Uh, how many could hear? So I had a few questions when I was down there, uh, you know, the new scientist there for the seven lakes alliance, so. Forgive me for not having a lot of faith, but, uh, so my questions were, it says, um. So, I mean, you guys have got all this money and you're throwing all these grants around, you're doing this and this and this, I said, why don't you give grants for people that. Are on the cusp, that can upgrade their septic systems? The response was, oh, there's all kinds of programs where you can be dirtcore, go out to dirt, and then she comes up and says. Well, septic's have very little impact on the lakes, it's what she does, it's already on public record. And then I was like, alright, whatever, that's not what the prior scientist before you said, but, alright. And then I said, well, how about I'm trying to get low sand and, and salt areas around the lakes? Because we all know Upper Long Pond's taking a beating well from the drainage. That they've been putting in and the way they lay calcium and sand and salt down through the village. And I know they've dug out a tractor, uh, dumped, couple dump dark loads of sand off the Hewland Road, which is a twenty five mile, on a thirty mile, on a zone. And there's no reason for sand to be dumped out heavily on that area. And she's, you know what the response was? As long as the sand doesn't have dust in it, it's okay. And this is what she told me. Uh, then I went on and said something more about septic systems. And, uh, uh, you know, how Belgrade, you know, when you sell a piece of property and do it that. And a few minutes later, the Rome code enforcement spoke up, uh, we're talking, so obviously he wasn't listening, so he wanted to talk. And, um. He gets up, he's all, I don't know what Belgrade does, but Rome. He gets up, he's all, I don't know what Belgrade does, but Rome. He says, when you sell a piece of property, you have to have the septic inspected. So forgive my little respect for Seven Lakes Alliance. Um, and then with the building they have there and with the experimental septic. That's only for twenty people a day that they're using as a public bathroom. You know, I have little faith in them. Just saying.
Septic inspect, septic inspections are now required by the state. It's not town by town, it's.
For now, for on sales, but.
Again, uh, in the shoreline zone. And the numbers I've seen. They uh, actually, they're doing a more widespread than just shoreline zone, but they're all required in shoreline zone. Um. A lot of real companies are just doing. You know, disclosure. Um, the numbers as far as septic. Including the waterways. Every lake is different. You know, Long Pond is deep, it's a real basin. East Pond, North Pond, you know, Upper Great Pond, you got some wetland areas. It's not as. Much of a basin so far as, um, you know, it's, it's a gradual lake. But the highest numbers I've seen are six percent of phosphorus is dedicated to septic systems. All the lakes have a different number. So. They've been doing a lot of testing, I think from Kobe, where they're actually testing the water for caffeine. To find hotspots or concentration, because caffeine's not gonna come from the deer.
Nor does ibuprofen. But they've had a.
So lost.
Pretty good result. It's an inexpensive test, the caffeine test. So um. So, so they're doing that now?
Mm-hmm.
And they're supposed to be sharing their hotspots, just I've told, we'll go test over here, you know.
Caffeine and board.
Yes.
Who's that coming?
Where you come from?
Coffee.
You.
Coffee.
Yeah, yeah, that's right through your system, yeah.
Simple test. The water, they test in the lake water for caffeine.
That's a standard test now?
That you started.
Yeah, no, it's, it's used as an indicator, uh, parameter.
Who's that?
Well, D P's been using it for quite some time, but uh, others in the scientific community use it when they're looking at. The transport of subsurface wastewater disposal to either surface water bodies or to wells, uh. Uh, it's a good way to distinguish between that and other potential sources in the area. Uh, that it's human caused. Yeah. Ibuprofen's a good one as well. Very prevalent in our waste water.
I don't before I go now, talk about it again, during every, every day.
Well, then you got a plume, who knows how big.
So, uh, I think from the audience, Mr. Riley wanted to say.
You and I talked about this the other day with Rome regarding ADU, I don't know if you wanted to know it, we.
Sure, we, we interested in it.
It was very simple. It's uh, for total square foot is not exceed a thousand square feet, nine hundred is the minimum. So that limited, the, the big concern was people building, you know, bigger places, new air V and Bs and that kind of thing. The other restriction was twenty-five feet, feet height, and then just uh, off-street parking is a hundred and sixty-two feet. Uh, minimum. So again, we kept it very simple. Up there, when we did it. You guys are doing, you know, a lot more, it's like you're working.
Okay, so I was just about to ask if you're dealing at all with the groundwater quality or?
No, that would, and, and again, everything was more, you know, shoreline obviously stayed the same and.
Right.
Those kind of restrictions, but didn't get in anything deeper.
Right, right. So, so have you actually made, uh, do you have ordinance changes proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz uh, the board asked me back. Uh, my first meeting in December to look at what other towns are doing. And I just went by town websites. So I, I knew that you were working on it, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Uh, but that, my summary is in your board packet. And so what I have for um.
Yeah, I heard you had, we discussed it last, we voted on the last, the last first.
Yeah, you know, that, that isn't quite right, but you, you can see that most other towns that I looked at on, and their websites. I didn't call anybody or anything like that. Sydney, other lake community towns like Sydney, Oakland, China, Winthrop. Monmouth, Casco, Bridgeton, Naples, Greenville, Rangel. I did, I actually did check Reedfield and I forgot to put it in the table. Um, but the uh, really Rome, um, Winthrop. And Bridgeton are the only towns that are actively working on, on implementing LD uh, two thousand and three. Um, the others are not. Uh, of course, many of these have zoning, uh, uh, including Sydney. Um, and China and Winthrop and uh. And so th- they have separate requirements that are gonna be more, um, more owners in, in many respects, but. Um, and the only towns that's really, uh, other than Rome that seem to be fording ahead or Winthrop. And Bridgeton, in both those cases, they're not having to rely on like KD cog, they're. They're uh, relying on, in Winthrop's case, their town planner. And in Bridgeton's case, the town attorney. So they're getting professional, uh, technical assistance that way. Um. But Reedfield hadn't started working on this at all, at least it's not indic- it, nothing's indicated in their minutes or, or agendas. Going back to last summer.
So, uh, Mr. Riley, you said that, uh, your, that you guys already approved your planning board approved your graft in December?
Right, already voted on.
Alright, and, and uh, again, what was it, what was the three uh?
The maximum of a thousand feet for the footprint.
Okay.
Twenty-five feet peak height.
Okay.
And a hundred and sixty-two um, uh, square feet per row parking area. For off-street parking.
Oh, is that a hundred and sixty-two?
I think you do, fee of parking area should be provided for each bedroom if needed to do.
Uh, for each bedroom.
Right, parking should be in addition to any apartment necessary for primary dwelling.
So you must have concluded then that somehow is able, you're. Able to do that under the state law? Require off-street parking, because for some reason I had the impression that we could not.
That's my understanding of it.
Okay.
Um, and then we thought uh. Requires uh, septic for requisites, no shoreline zone.
Yeah. I, I'm just curious, um. Are, are you, are, is Rome a member of KD cog?
You know, I don't know that number.
I, I was just curious if you were, why you chose to go it out on your own and not. Uh, seek their assistance, cuz the, I mean, we went this route because that's the s- way the state set it up.
Right.
Um, and we didn't, at least speaking for myself, I didn't feel like I had the expertise to do it, uh, which of a country.
You know, Rome does use KD cog for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, so there's a relationship there. And I think what's turning the last small town away from KD cog is the cost.
Yeah.
Of using KD cog.
As a member, your membership, yeah.
And the chapter six seventy-two rules that came out. Are pretty basic. And a lot of towns are just saying. We're gonna meet this rule, put verbiage in to meet this rule, and put verbiage in to meet that rule. Now, the off-street parking cannot be required. But you also can't park on a state road, so. You got no option but to park off the street. So that's something you can address if you want, or leave it out. Because right now, someone built a house, we can approve it. We don't tell them to park.
Right. I don't see parking as a thing.
Hmm, not on here. Where does I want it to park? If you want it to.
Well, back in August, we did, or somebody did raise the issue of, well, what about, you know. Uh, if uh, you have areas on some of the, particularly the narrow private roads. Um, it's blocked by people parking and how, how are emergency vehicles gonna get down there, um, you know? And the, as well, I mean, there are a few town roads that are pretty narrow too, uh, for that matter, um. Well, Lake Shore Drive being.
I told people to get off the town roads where they're parking, just. More than once. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Come, we gotta get off the town road. If I, if they don't wanna listen to me, definitely come tell them. So they usually listen to me.
So the town doesn't need a parking ordinance to be, to have that authority to do that?
No.
Cuz that's what the town concluded about, what, ten years ago. On Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah.
That's dirt. That's not a town linked to the road, is it?
Well, part of it's paid.
Yeah, part of it's paid and part of it, a limited part of it's town road, I believe, and that. I think, yeah, the part where that was in question was town road.
Yeah.
Well, um, those are all questions for KD cog, I guess, but.
I got a question, goes back to you, I think when you were talking. Um, is it clear that a town can adopt stuff in the plumbing code that's more restrictive than?
Yes, it can, yeah, yeah. You know, the tur- it stated quite unequivocally that you can. Yeah, I'm surprised to see that, actually.
Yeah, I, you don't hear too many towns with. Provisions that are, you know, it's like, go to the plumbing code.
Yeah, well, and, and I do think you have to be kind of careful because. If you think about how that's implemented by contractors, uh, you know. They're not gonna necessarily be looking for some count, you know. Uh, requirement, it's more stringent than the uh, plumbing code and uh. And uh, so we could end up making a lot of work for Hans.
Alright. So any more comments or discussion around the topic of LD two thousand and three? None. So next will be the approval of the minutes of December seventh. I gave some time to. Thank you for coming. And thank you for all this input too, that was great, uh, it was kind of a pleasure. Yeah, good info right there. So. I'm gonna show you a copy of the audiences. I missed that, totally.
You mean what, huh?
On page two. It says that I will a- also contact towns of Rome, New Sharon, Naples, and Winthrop together. To see if the board can get a copy of the audiences. I actually didn't do that. I will have to get on.
No, that, that was what I did.
Okay.
That's what I did. Your name's there.
That should say then, uh, Mr. Uh, CEO, huh?
Right.
Quite a surprise to you, huh?
I crammed so much stuff in the month of December and all the first two days of this year that. I, I really cannot remember if I actually committed to that, so it was, um. Your CEO should go there. Um, the thing I didn't have for this meeting is the letter that I'm gonna send. To all the watershed, um, towns. That are part of our watershed, that I'm gonna have that letter with me, uh, inviting everybody. Um. I'm not sure that the letter needs approval from the board to go out.
What was that, inviting them to the phone?
To the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, training meeting.
I thought we decided we weren't gonna do that, Paul.
General?
I thought we decided we weren't gonna do that, cuz I.
Thought the last thing, the meeting before, I, I suggested maybe not.
Okay.
Then the last meeting, now I say the meeting, the first meeting about a month and a half into it.
Okay.
The next meeting, I, I said it's probably good for Cohen's perspective. Now that if he's gonna go talk to a town about shoreline zoning. The other towns, he kind of killed two birds with, six birds with one stone.
Yeah.
But, and that we've discussed that probably won't be too many people coming from other towns anyway.
We restricted only to, uh, kind of two members in the dining boards. There's all the space here, something like that. So are we, are we interested in inviting other people or?
I'd leave it up to the board, the rest of the boards come. That's my thought is. I don't think we're gonna get that many and it would hurt, but uh. If other people don't really wanna do it, then it's not gonna, I'm not gonna cry over it.
Okay.
I don't care either, why, I was just.
Sure.
Either way, it's going.
Mr. Shil, what do you think?
Um. I've kind of gone both ways on this. Um, the, you know, the downside of inviting other towns is that. Our ordinance uh, may be slightly different in, in particulars regarding non-conforming structures, for example, than. Certainly than Smithfield's, uh, I'm not sure about Rome and, uh, and certainly different than Mount Vernon's, uh, cuz they just. Rubber stamped the uh, state model, basically. Uh, so they got the thirty percent, for example, expansion over the nineteen eighty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Size of a camp, um, but, um, you know, that, I'm not sure. You know, as long as Colin's aware of that, you know, he, he couldn't work around it. I certainly think. That it would be worth, make it more worth his time. And, and maybe this shouldn't be my concern, but uh, if he was, uh, had the opportunity to talk to multiple towns. And there may be some advantage to talking to uh, any crop pollination, if you will, among uh. This, in discussions between the plumbing boards of uh, the towns in, in the great, in the uh, Belgrade Lakes watershed. Uh, I'm not quite sure what that would be, but.
One reason I had suggested the uh, possibility of other towns. Was that Colin's comment to me when I first asked him about it, he was more or less, uh. Gee, you know, I talk to code officers a lot, but they kind of know what's going on cuz they got their own training. I rarely talk to planning boards. And they don't really, a lot of them, I'm not saying it's Belgrade's planning board, but uh. A lot of planning boards really don't have much of the clue. but, uh, a lot of planning boards really don't have much of a clue, uh, in terms of details of shoreline zoning.
Well, it, you know, to the extent any other. I mean, some might argue that we don't have a clue, but, uh, the, uh, but to the extent other towns in, in this watershed are not diligently implementing the, or properly implementing shoreline zoning, it kind of hurts Belgrade, too, both in terms of property values on the entire, say, great ball of Great Pond, for example, but also, uh, in, uh, from a pragmatic standpoint, um, of jeez, I can get away with this in Rome, but I can't get away with it in Belgrade and, and I can get away with this in Belgrade, but I can't get away with it in Mount Vernon, uh, kind of thing, and, yeah. So we kind of, you know, uh, bring everybody's expertise uh, a little higher.
Hmm.
Might help every, all the towns.
Yeah. I can tell you from firsthand experience, the perception is you can get away with more in Belgrade than you can in Rome. I went to three steering committee meetings last month. And I was called out in a Zoom meeting for just that.
Is that because of Belgrade's long history of not enforcing the ordinance?
Probably. And you look at property, like looking at that long point with all the trees being cleared. It's a big beautiful house there and ten years ago with all trees. I mean, they specifically called out Long Point, State Point, a few other known neighborhoods.
Which, which is Long Point?
That's the end of Woodland Camp Road. And if you go to Google Maps and you go back to two thousand thirteen, you look at the difference, you'll see what they're talking about. Uh, we approve that.
That's, that's the house on the. You got me out on my point there, you know? Yeah. So, um, so much different, it would be, um, there was a lot of structures that are established.
You know, if you look at it, you're going to see more than two hundred and fifty square foot opening in the trees. And then see about a five thousand square foot opening in the trees, if not more. But that's about the size of the house you built.
No, 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 this house is totally a big one. Um.
This is a, no, this is not one forty-two. This, you're talking about the one is that is way at the end of the point.
Yep.
So that used to be back stairs.
Right. And, and all those outbuildings.
I'm just saying, you look at Google Maps, you see all the.
Yeah, you can't use Google Maps. It's deceiving. Uh, we don't use Google Maps because it can't be, it didn't have valid use against me once and wrong again. And, uh, it's very deceiving.
Well, you can see there are green trees and rooftop.
So we're going to get back to this invite book, uh, we, we trying to figure out now who would.
Yeah, we, we are in agreement to invite other towns in the watershed. I thought, I thought you were.
Yeah, yeah, are we, are we going to do that or?
I, that's what we're trying to decide, to make sure that everybody's comfortable with.
Okay, I just wanted to find out.
Yeah, I, I thought.
This, this is our house.
Yeah, I understand that, and I think it's a great opportunity to be inclusive about it. Because, uh, the planning board, uh, people are less informed and protocols in office and uh, so I think let's be, uh, uh, upfront about it and be proactive and see what happens.
Sure.
You know, kind of set the example a little bit.
Sure. So you are for, for it too and, uh, Mr. Clark?
I mean, God knows, I can use strength, you know, if anyone, but I, I think my only concern would be, you know, what our priorities is. You know, the K V cog and L D two thousand and three seems like that's priority and we're trying to handle that out and if we could, you know, focus on that on the eighteenth while we're here and maybe avoid like a twenty-fifth meeting. I would prefer that over, I mean, I'm not opposed to Colin coming. I think it'd be very informational and and I would definitely benefit from it myself, but just as far as priorities list is concerned.
I hear nothing on that. The, the more people you have, the more questions you're going to have. The more time's going to be used up.
Yeah, it's just. It seems like L D two, two thousand and three is, is, you know, our priority and we're trying to handle. I mean, you're talking about having four meetings in one month because of it, you know what I mean? So to give away, to give away a, you know, a majority of a meeting.
You are envisioning that that same night after the training we can tackle two thousand and three?
No, what I'm saying is if we didn't have a training and focused on two thousand and three and then maybe avoid a meeting on, say, the twenty-fifth of January because we took care of it on the eighteenth. To me, that would be preferable, you know, I mean, I just, I, I, I'm all in for a train. If it could be pushed back, you know, that.
Or something. No, this is the thing. We talk about this training in December and this two thousand and three opportunity we gave in court just came up.
Right, that's what I meant.
So we are reacting to it.
Yeah, right.
So, so we already had stationed plan, uh, Mr. Clark to come on the eighteenth and he already made commitments on that.
Okay, okay. So that, yeah, so now you're asking should, do you want to bring in another town? So I would feel a little bit.
Yes.
I mean, again, it'd be a timing thing. The more people you have, yeah, and I don't know.
I, I do think that if we do want to make sure that we don't exceed the whatever the legal capacity of this room is and, uh, and so I think it would be, uh, smart to ask, um, uh, other towns, uh, and, and for that matter, the appeals board who would be among the invitees. I mean, they definitely need the training as well, uh, our, our appeals board, that is, um, the, um, uh, you know, to let us know, you know, who's going to be attending, um, I hesitate to call it registration, but, you know, so at least we have a head count.
Yeah. I, I, so the Rome, the towns that we're going to invite are Rome, Oakland, Sydney, um, Mount Vernon.
Yeah. Sydney?
Yeah. Oakland, uh, Rome and.
Smithfield.
It's Israel, yeah.
Mercer? They, they order, um, what's, what?
We talked about Oaks last time, but I don't remember who said they don't do anything. I might as.
So one, two, three, four, five, six towns. I'll actually tell an invitation invite that they are limited to two people per town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good compromise.
Yeah. The max, yeah.
And, uh, and then we're going to invite our, um, Board of Appeals.
Yes.
I think we should invite, not that I think many or maybe any, maybe one or two of the select board should be.
I see.
Doesn't hurt to ask, you know?
It doesn't hurt to ask and at a minimum, they need to know what we're doing. And, um, and, uh, I think it would, it would help us if they had at least some, an inkling of what we do.
So, uh, so seven more might be five and then, uh, Board of Appeal, how many people are Board of Appeals? Five? Seven?
I'm sorry?
The Board, Board of Appeals, how many people?
Uh, for our Board of Appeals, I would say any, any of them.
Yeah, but how many, how many are in the board?
Oh.
It's like they're, they're five of, like, those.
Yeah, yeah, six, maybe with an alternate.
Okay.
So six. We have six, five, and then we have seven here. And then we're talking about twelve invites. So we're talking about eleven, uh, uh, double fast, you know, thirty people here.
Many?
Thirty.
Do you know what the legal capacity of this room is?
There isn't one.
I know that's not true.
I posted, no, I asked farm marshals. So it's never been graded.
Really?
I would say.
Well, we have, recently, we have fifty people here before.
Yeah, well, just as you did, I mean, it's legal capacity. I mean, six square feet per person. So measure the room and so that's.
Thirty-six square foot per person.
So if, if you squared that off and added one, uh, two more chairs, that, that would be fifteen people. So it would be double that size. So that, this room could easily accommodate that.
Are we taking too much space here anyways?
Well, there's that, too.
Sixteen, so sixteen times three this way.
Get your laser in.
So thirty-five by around.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
Forty-five.
Yeah, thirty people could be accommodated here pretty easily, I think.
Yeah.
Assuming they all showed up and they probably.
For the audience, we're all nerds, so you know.
The real question is.
We have to get this to the.
I, I guess we skipped over, there's plenty important minutes, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so while we're on this subject, then, before we jump back, um, uh, one of my questions is, uh, what do we need to do to prepare the site for Colin? I mean, do we need, do you know, Rich, do we need to provide, is he going to be using a, um, uh, a projector, you know, uh, uh, is he going to need a screen? Is he going to need a, you know, easel or, you know, wire, you know, uh, extension cords, all that stuff?
I'd got to talk to him about that. I've talked details of the, uh, thing other than making sure that he's planning to come and be here at six o'clock.
Okay.
I don't even know if the town, does the town have a PowerPoint projector?
Typically.
What we do, we have, we, we connect his computer.
To the walls?
Yeah.
See, that wouldn't work real well for, uh, thirty people sitting in the audience over there.
Oh, I see.
Typically, I always, definitely, I took my own projector, um, but, uh, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, no, I, I always brought one of the department's projectors and whoever was the host would provide the screen and, and, um, and set up the chairs.
But I'll tell you, if he, if we, if he doesn't have it, if he does have it in the computer, we can put in these two, uh, uh, screens and it's, it's easy to figure it out on the screens here. Because the, the audience look at this one and we look at that one.
Yeah.
We did, we had done that with the, uh, school bill when the superintendent comes down. He used to be.
Who renovated this one?
Uh, it used to be that he was there, yeah. But, I mean, I can see, I can see myself in that screen there.
Yeah. I mean, this isn't exactly a Megatron. Uh, I just question whether people with that would be able to see.
Well, you know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
People pay attention to Friday when people want to.
Now, if we, the other portion of it is, uh, he might have slides where he might be have, uh, what they call, um, uh, presentation notes. So he had probably his presentation already printed.
Yeah, he does, he does, yeah.
And, uh, is, if that's a little too people, even when they cannot see that great, close to the screen, they can't really see the paper.
You know, you can.
That's extra work for him, right?
And it's a verbal presentation, so, you know, there's three modes of, of.
It's been a long time since I was in, uh, uh, working, but I would think that he'd probably come with a PowerPoint presentation. Now, the PowerPoint will be out of, uh, service these days. I have no idea.
It's fine. If he has a PowerPoint presentation, we can, we can, uh, put it in the screens here. It's just that it will be from way back, looking into the screen might be difficult, but if he has a handout, um, that would make up for that.
I, I talk to him about handouts.
All right. So that said, let's go back to the minutes.
Well, actually, there's one other thing. If we're going to, Michael, finish up the subject.
Okay, sure.
Go over Rich's suggested list of, uh, the subject matters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, uh, people in your own mind feel that we want to add what is important to have him talk about. I kind of just went through the ordinance and you could spend, uh, two days going and picking out every little thing, but I tried to pick the things that seem to be sometimes troubling to us or what have you. And I still think I can amend it.
Overall, I, I think this is a good list myself. Uh, my only, I, well, two questions for you, Rich. One is, what, what's the determined floor area issue?
Oh, whether the deck counts as floor area.
Oh, 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 oh.
Type things like that.
Do you mean floor? Floor area or footprint?
Foot, well, yeah, footprint.
Yeah. Uh, you might want to change that to footprint. Uh, because I was thinking the way the ordinance used to be were.
Yeah. And I was thinking what the ordinance used to be years ago.
Yeah, um, and the, the only other thing I, I wondered about, and I know you and I have talked about this and, and it's a part of the ordinance that we don't really implement as a town. And that is the requirement that, uh, I, I think it's expansions of non-conforming structures be, um, uh, some kind of notice has to be provided in the registry of deeds.
Mm-hmm.
And we've never implemented that as long as I've been on the planning board.
We haven't, still, not yet. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to just say, I, I would be interested in knowing, you know, uh, more about that and, and what would be required to require people to comply with that. You know, I mean, what do they need to actually submit to the registry of deeds?
Yeah, um, yeah, I know, and variances need to be submitted. And I know the ordinance of the law there uh, is if you don't do it within thirty days or whatever, some time period, it becomes null and void.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't think that's true, though, in our ordinance for the.
I never looked at the statute. I'm assuming it's a statute that put that in there and not somebody, I mean, planning boards before us.
Hmm.
I guess we better, or we ask in, maybe we better check that out.
Hans, do you know, have you heard that before, assume through training or anything about needing to, uh, put your expansion provision in the registry of deeds? If you get an approval for expansion of a non-conforming structure.
Nothing like that. I mean, registry of deeds, I mean, it's too.
So the question really is, is it, is that chapter one thousand or is that something that some prior planning board put into our ordinance?
Yeah, I know we didn't do.
I don't remember.
No, no, we, our, this board didn't.
No.
Predates all of us.
I mean, if you put a rent up right away for your property, that goes to register it needs, it's, it's been announced, so.
Yeah. Well, why don't we skip that then? We'll just confuse everybody.
Right. So we, uh, think.
George, did you say skip or get across with that?
The idea of the registry of deeds thing, yeah.
Well, if I, if I ask Colin and he says, yes, it's in the statute, I think it's worth.
Okay, all right, yeah, no, we'll see it that way, yeah.
If it, if it's something that.
Because you need to Belgrade.
Yeah, then I won't have time to discuss it.
Right, yeah, that's, that's a better way to end.
Okay, back to you, sir.
Sure, that's okay. So will be fair game to, to add this list when we're inviting through the letter?
Yeah, yeah.
So when I'm doing the letter inviting people, so these are the topics that are going to be discussed.
Oh, the letter?
Yeah.
Maybe in, I wouldn't necessarily give the whole list, but I would maybe, uh, in the invitation, sit, get, uh, summarize it or, or just give a few examples. I mean, some of these are really good, um, you know, like what is a hazard tree? We always debate that.
So, so. Tell me what we, what we did, top five, high hot items here, I will, I will mention.
Well, number two, you know, he, he has had that Jason to wetland, forest to wetland or non-forest to wetland. I don't know the difference.
Okay, number two.
Think non-conformance, uh, uh, whole issue of non-conforming structures and expansions of, uh,
so all of number four.
Oh, my God. Yeah, but I, I don't know if we want to just list all these things and say.
So you're saying four A will be one?
Four F, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, so I got, uh, so far, three, two more.
I, I got a question on the, uh, G, non. I, I got a question on the, uh, G, non-conforming lots, what can we, what can be done with it? What, what's, what's that all about?
I don't know about, maybe what can be done with it may not be the question, but what? And I guess it's, it's, it's probably not a terrible way of saying it, but you have non-conforming lots under the same ownership. And one is developed, can you develop the other one?
Oh, one's vacant, one's developed.
Yeah, one's vacant, one's developed, can you put another house on that, or do you have to combine the lots?
And they have to be a certain size and often, you know, one that's vacant has to be a certain size, you wanna do that, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, or, uh, a lot of it depend on when the lot was, was, uh, created.
Right, yeah.
If a lot was created years ago and you've got a house on one, uh, it may be different than. Certainly, if you create it, the non-conformity, you're not gonna be able to build on it.
Yeah, timing, timing is very important, because back in, uh, nineties and stuff like that, you have, you have. It had to go fifteen feet except for twenty feet.
Yeah, it's gonna be twenty thousand, now it's forty thousand.
Uh, uh, so, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, those are the kind of questions.
I would say measuring shore frontage by B and Y one.
Which one?
Uh, number eleven.
Eleven.
It's a, it's an easy answer. Don't have to describe it too much, but it's something that's very, very commonly, uh.
The practical point of it is, is hard, is sometimes gonna get harder.
The realtor would say this here. From there to there, they'd measure around, around the points and stuff, but. The shoreline zoning answer is you go a straight line right across the water, uh, to the other point, that's how much frontage you have.
Oh, I remember you ran across them.
Pardon, George?
Well, I, I remember a case where Hans ran across that when he first started.
Yeah.
And it's. So is that how they figure how much shoreline there is?
Yeah.
How many, I'm just curious, because that sounds like such what BS to me. Because when they go figure out how many lot, how many miles of shoreline, how many feet of shoreline you have. Do they do straight lines across the points, or do they go around points? Me, the assessor or the real estate group? We talk about. Geologically. No, no, I, I think, it's a good question, but I think, what's his name, uh, Col, Colin, I take it from a. A, uh, shoreline zoning. But what I'm saying is that thing is such BS, because when they figure the square, the. When they figure the amount of shoreline a town has for tax purposes. Oh, for tax purposes. Say, just take that for instance, geologically, they're going around every friggin' point there is. I think, I don't know. What's that? And how do you figure out the mileage and the footage of your shoreline? You go around your shoreline and. But D E P, no, they go straight across. Right.
It's a way of, uh, maintaining a, uh. Reasonable lot coverage or not lot coverage, but.
Oh, it's BS.
If, if you went into a cove like that. And said, this is all your shore frontage, and that cove is only thirty feet wide, you're gonna have a house here, a house there, a house there. Um.
So you can't walk around that frontage like a hundred and fifty feet?
No, you can't, you can't.
But you can't call it frontage, but you're being taxed on it.
Well, that's up to the tax people. This is environmental ordinance.
Yeah.
It's not a tax.
Again, I'm calling BS.
But you, you can have a peninsula.
You know, some of these things, D E P goes up with and such.
Well, they, they, I think, I, I always thought that.
What if the peninsula was like a quarter mile long, you still only have a hundred foot.
Same.
So, I, I would say that many of them will do it because of the, that while it works. Do all that measuring.
Hundred feet long.
Twenty-five feet of.
Yeah.
Right, I guess, I guess I really, I really touch, uh. The, the last, the last one I'm gonna put in is number five, determining lot area. And that will be it. So, uh, going back to the minutes, so I think we've wrapped up with that for the eighteen. Are we?
Rich, do you have all the guidance from us that you need?
I think so.
Right, so, um.
George, you bringing the donuts?
I can. Never forget the time I went to meet with the fire department up in Manawaska and forgot the donuts, holy mackerel. You think the world of it.
Did you bring the donuts?
Yeah.
Can bring some rice, and people want dinner here.
Who brought the beer? Do, who brought the beer? I watched.
Beer in the morning?
Okay, let's rile over here. So, uh, minutes, uh, any, any, uh, comments on the minutes?
And then, um, I don't know who the parent was, but it was a Wood Matson or was it Lynn Matson?
It's Lynn. It's Lynn Matson.
Right.
In, in the minutes.
Yeah, I get it.
One, it's not Wood Matson, it's Lynn Matson.
Oh, okay.
And then, uh, if you guys can help me out here, Eric that was here, he's involved with the, uh. Belgrade Historical Society. Huglan, that's his last name. How, how you spell that?
Uh, I would, I put H O L G L A N D, but I'm not positive.
Is Phillips spelled correctly? I mean, tip, it's not a typical spelling of Phillips, but.
It's only one S, is it?
Well, that's what I thought, um.
So we are, I would say one, one S on Phillips. And then Wood is, Wood Matson is Lynn Matson, L, L Y N N.
Yeah.
And Mr. Eric is Holland, and it, the spell is H O V L A N G?
I think so.
Okay.
It's better than Holland.
Yeah.
Above that, and board members, uh, get rid of the and after Craig's name. Not major, but. I was thinking that, um, the, uh, under new business, number one, the, the Frank, the Belgrade Lakes. Uh, village application, the discussion, um, there's only one applicant, so. Uh, remove the S in the first line, second word, uh, and same line, uh, just. Be more specific and clear, uh, in front of parking lot, put it, put in, uh, a fifty space parking lot. Uh, just so that, and, uh, then on the second line. Um, uh, there's sort of a run-on sentence there, uh, Andy Dunn in Denmark presented the proposed plans to the Belgrade Plan Board. I would put a period there, and then capitalize some, some key points he addressed were, da, da, da. Um, and one of those key points I think that should be added because, and it back came up in the comments today was, uh. The M D O T highway access permit. I would add that to the list, just to make sure that that's highlighted. Um, then under the decision, uh, of the same item, that same subject item, uh. Second line, uh, I would put a period after contractor, uh. And then they, uh, continue on, uh, capitalize this will be in. Uh, add, addressed by a condition of approval. And then on the next page, under the, uh, old business K V cog, L D two thousand and three. Um. Sarah alluded to it earlier that one, two, three, four lines down, at the end, it's not Sarah's. Sarah, uh, it should be my name there, uh, will, um. Yeah, George Seal will contact the towns of it, it was never, we never discussed him sharing as far as I know, uh.
We got a tough plan for George's, uh, we have a couple of ones, uh.
Uh, page one.
Going to page one, uh, new business, under discussion, first line. I would put that they, they plan to gift, rather they would then gift, because the townspeople are the ones that. They can't gift it themselves, they, they, they're really planning to gift it if the town approves them.
Yeah.
Um, and then under the decision. Um, the planning board reviewed the application and found it was complete, except for the name and number of the certified. And then last page, uh, Sydney with an I. Uh, under discussion, um, wanna list all the towns there on the.
Oh, yeah, that's Sydney, Australia.
And what were shits in?
That's the Southern Pacific.
Any other changes? So I'll undertake a motion to approve the minutes. Second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Sakar. You, uh, uh, you approve it?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, and we surrender, I approve, we approve the, uh, minutes of, uh, December seventh as amended. Five in favor, no opposed. So that done, we have, um, moving, moving to the C E O, uh, update.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Next meeting, Brandon Cohen.
Yeah.
Uh, meeting after that, and, uh, order to shoreline zone. And there might be another C E R O coming up, daycare operating out of a house, purchasing C E R O.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a, uh, that's a state law, isn't it? That you can start.
Take care permit.
Yeah, you can start.
We hear about it too, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so they're converting, uh, what's currently a private residence into this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How, how the, down the road, going through with the building already inside, if I was gonna put it in the, uh. Uh, parking areas there, uh, you go a half mile down.
There where we thought general, how, who was gonna go in?
Bell Bases?
Probably, yeah, yeah.
I heard from the.
So what's, what's happening on there? So it's still supposed to be a, um, rental place?
Storage facility as far as Manchester storage, where the U C signed up, same company. But they don't present anything, yeah.
Yeah.
I asked them to put more erosion control out, they hit it with a weed. I had them come back, vegetation on the road, they did that one in three days. They're, they're playing, you know, I think the guy's outstanding, you know, every time I call him, he's responded.
Yeah, and the other, the other one, the, the solar farm was supposed to put up room thirty-five, what, what happened to that? You know, the solar farm?
Nothing's happened yet. Still all about Steve's.
Oh, Steve Buckpumps? Yeah, I, I haven't heard of the word, uh, and there's certainly no sign of any activity, in fact, I. Won't, kinda wonder if the clocks run out on him.
Yeah, there's some clocks that run out, um. In North Belgrade, that barn that you approved for apartments.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that never happened with that, they expired November, they. Well, they closed it, so.
I ran it and probably gone down, most of the worst of the cost.
Yeah.
But the solar farm, when did that one expire?
That was a three-year one, so.
So a year ago, once again, another.
It probably got like six, eight months.
Yeah, right, so.
And then, and then the other, uh, going, uh, root, um. Eight and eleven, the last day, uh, you know, with the big talk about the solar farm going down, overlooking the, uh. And Peyton's call, what, what's, what came out of that?
Pretty much dead, wasn't it?
That one dead or?
Just the, uh, the application, or we didn't approve one, right?
We never received one.
They were just here to inquire about it.
Last I knew, although this is somewhat dated, um. It was after whenever they met with us, was, uh, last spring?
I don't know.
Uh, uh, cause they were asking about the property across the street, may recall, um. At that point in time, they were still pursuing their state permit. So I was, you know, I, I got, I kinda walked away from that, realize, realization that, well. Maybe they're, you know, still in the game, I don't know.
Sound like they were pretty much, you know, when they came to us to ask about variance and stuff across the. On the lakes of the Great Bond side, sound like really decided they weren't gonna be able to do it.
Yeah, well, particularly the, uh, limit on ten acres of clearing.
I got another one too, uh, the, uh, the landfill, this beautiful landfill heading, uh, south, remember that got all clear cut? I know beyond it was there, so what happened to that? I don't even know.
There wasn't any, anything about that.
Yeah.
I mean, they kind of.
Yeah.
Start check out.
Yeah, I, I, okay, well, I thought they were putting, they're talking, they're putting a subdivision in there?
No, we don't, yes, I just.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't know if, um, what's his name, uh, the contractor there from Gardner, uh.
Stephen G.
Yeah, Stephen G.
But.
He owned it, I don't know if he still owns it, but he, I, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if he came back with a subdivision. After the five years ran out, cause that, that's, in my mind, clearly, a, um, a liquidation cut. I mean, they didn't leave a pleasant thing there that's marketable, and, um, the, uh. Uh, but they have to wait five years before they can subdivide it under state law.
Oh.
So I wouldn't be surprised if we see something, or, or at least it's something to keep an eye on, I, I don't, you know, what will happen? But it seems like it's got subdivision written all over it.
Only question I have.
I got one other question related to Colin. Should I tell him two hours? Questions included within that two hours, that we, we don't wanna be here more than two hours on that track.
I would agree with him.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh.
All right.
And he shouldn't be afraid to crack the whip on, you know.
Oh.
On that.
Yeah, we can't, what we can't do is, uh, get, uh, bogged down in questions, and he never gets through the.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I always liked it to answer the questions as you're talking about the thing, but at the same time, you can get bogged down. And, uh, not finish what you're talking about, so.
Yeah.
I guess, then tell him.
To hold on to question two.
Questions, but if it starts to get bogged down, say, let's cut down the questions, I wanna get through this.
Yeah, and if there's time remaining, go back to questions.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions for the CEO? Um, so now, I don't need a whole discussion, I think. So I, I don't need a full discussion. I think we, we have plenty of that and we. Any other discussion? No, so I wanted a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Carl?
Yes.
This is Sergeant.
Thank you.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? Yes, and we surrender, say yes, why in favor?